Council and all those that are busy working to make this city a great city. Put your hand upon our police department, Lord, they are so important, and when things happen, they call for them. And they are to serve and protect, but many things are happening, diversities of places, keep them safe as they are out there. Our fire department, our schools, Lord, our district, Lord God, and our children that are out there, Lord, just help them to grow strong in you. Give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding in our city, our community, Lord, that we will work and walk hand in hand with one another to promote a beautiful city called Baldwin Park.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and just as far all. Thank you. I want to say, first of all, good evening to everyone that is present today at the city council. Of course, we're going to be acknowledging several outstanding individuals that represent the city Baldwin Park. Want to also extend an appreciation for the veterans that are here today. Thank you very much, and thank you for the service, and for your contribution to this country, because we are obviously sitting here, and we represent, of course, this community, but it's all based on the fact that you were out serving our country, preserving our freedom. So, thank you very much on behalf of the city Baldwin Park. Alrighty, so, at this point, we're going to, council members wishing to close, yes, we have our city treasurer.
I'm just gonna take roll call.
Yes, roll call, that's right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Buenos dias a todos, and welcome to our meeting. Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, alright, thank you very much. Councilmembers, have any comments or anything they wish to share?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to close on behalf of someone that's so dear, I believe too, well, myself personally, but I know that we've all grown to know him. Mr. Nixon passed last night. Mr. Nixon is a staple in our community. He was a school board member, water board member for 25 years. Concurrently, this is a man of service, he also served our country, and his wife is part of our community as well, she belongs to the women's club, and so, my heart breaks for her because we have such a nice friendship, and so, my condolences go to the family, we're thinking of them. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I just want to share that I met Mr. Nixon back when I moved in, actually, 1979. What a great man. He was definitely an icon in the city Baldwin Park. He kept up, and it's amazing that the beautiful life that he had, and our deepest condolences goes out to his family. He was a very artistic person when it came to carpentry type of thing, so he would have all these little kind of windmills and what have you. So, please keep us apprised as to the actual funeral services for him.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Alright, anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
About a week or two ago, we also lost Dr. David Hall, that was very instrumental and a trustee for the Mount Sac School Board. Anybody who knew Mr. or Dr. Hall knew how he touched everybody's lives in so many ways, he was so positive, and really gave back to all of our communities, so our condolences go out to Dr. David Hall's family as well.
Yes, very well noted. Councilmember.
No, I was just gonna close on his behalf as well.
Alrighty, okay, very good, yes, and a lot of new David Hall, very special friend to the community, and member of the Board of Trustees at Mount San Antonio College. Yes.
I would also like to close in memory of Raymond Chavez. He was from, former councilmember from Irwindale.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Really, wow, yes, wow, okay.
The services will be on Monday.
On Monday, okay. Alright, we send a letter out to the Chavez family as well, and the individuals that we just mentioned at this point. Alright, so, at this point, we'll go over to the items that we have, we have various presentations, and some of the first ones that we have, we'll go over to the proclamation recognizing May as Older American Month, so do we have that proclamation? So, we'll have Councilmember Monica Garcia read the first one, there's enough for the councilmembers to read. So, do you want to go ahead and read that?
Older Americans.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, so, I'd like to present this proclamation, Older Americans Month. The theme is engage at every age for May 2018, whereas older Americans are among our greatest treasures, providing invaluable links to the past and wise counsel for the future, and whereas the gift of longevity will ensure that today's and tomorrow's seniors will continue making significant contributions to our families by giving of themselves freely and by sharing their wisdom and experience. And whereas it is important to acknowledge the contributions older individuals have made to our economic well-being in our communities and in the workplace through civic leadership and mentoring, and whereas the seniors of tomorrow will be increasingly multicultural and multi-generational, more diverse socially, ethically, and economically than past generations, and whereas an expanding elder population will profoundly impact every facet of our lives, redefining our ideas of work, retirement, and leisure, altering our housing and living arrangements, challenging our healthcare systems, reshaping our economy, and altering social and public policy, and whereas the opportunities and challenges that await as we begin a new chapter in human history require our continued commitment to the goal of ensuring that our senior citizens may enjoy active, productive, and healthy lives, and do so independently, safely, and with dignity for as long as they choose. And finally, whereas the Declaration of Older Americans Month coincides with the recognition of May as Older Americans Month by the President of the United States, with this year's national theme being Age Out Loud. Now, therefore, the mayor, Manuel Lozano, along with the mayor pro tem, Ricardo Pacheco, councilmembers, and city clerk, as well as treasurer, do hereby proclaim May 2008 as Older American Month, and urge all residents to participate in appropriate ceremonies honoring these men and women.
Alright, thank you. What we'll do at this point, read all the proclamations and have everyone come up for a picture. So, at this point, we'll have Councilmember Cruz Baca read the next proclamation.
This proclamation is for National Kids to Parks Day, it's Saturday, May the 19th. May the 19th, 2018, is the eighth annual National Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. National Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. It is important to introduce a new generation to our national parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades, and we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, mellitus, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. And National Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and whereas National Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now, therefore, Mayor Manuel Lozano, Mayor Pro Tem Ricardo Pacheco, councilmembers Cruz Baca, Monica Garcia, Susan Rubio, city treasurer Maria Contreras, and city clerk Alejandra Avila, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May the 19th, 2018, as National Kids to Parks Day in the city of Baldwin Park, and urge all citizens to support the National Park Trust by participating in outdoor activities at one of our city parks. And I want to thank, of course, our staff and Parks and Rec that do such a wonderful job with our children here in Baldwin Park, and encourage children to go outside and play. With this new technology, it's very difficult, but I think getting them involved in things that happen at our parks, I think is the best way to get them outdoors. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. At this point, we'll have Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, it gives me great honor to present the certificate of proclamation to the city clerks, being City Clerk's Week, May 6th to the 12th. Whereas the office of the city clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the city clerk is the oldest among public servants, whereas the office of the city clerk provides the professional link between citizens, local government, and agencies of government of other levels. Whereas city clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all, whereas the city clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas city clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the office affairs, whereas the city clerk, through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the city clerk, and especially recognize the work of our very own city clerk Alejandra Avila and clerk's staff that assist with duties of day-to-day services provided to the city departments, residents, and community members. Now, therefore, I, Manuel Lozano, mayor of the city of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Ricardo Pacheco, councilmember Cruz Baca, Monica Garcia, Susan Rubio, city clerk Maria Contreras, and city clerk Alejandra Avila, do hereby proclaim May 6th to the 12th, 2018, as City Clerk Week, and further extend our appreciation to the city's office for the vital services they perform every day. And on a personal note, everyone knows that I was the elected city clerk for four years, so I do recognize all the work that goes into this office, a lot of difficult tasks, so we commend you for your work, and please thank your staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, we have Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. CalFresh Awareness Month, May 2018, whereas one of the highest priorities of the Los Angeles County is to, I'm sorry, can you guys hear me back there? I'm not sure what this is.
Is your mic on?
It's on, but.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, is my mic on? Okay. CalFresh Awareness Month, May 2018, one of the highest priorities of Los Angeles County is to reduce food insecurity and improving health in the nation's largest populated county by increasing access and participation in the CalFresh program. And whereas food insecurity is defined as the lack of reliable access to a sufficient quantity of affordable nutritious food, and whereas studies suggest that household hunger negatively impacts the intellect, physical, and emotional development of children, and puts them at greater risk for obesity, diabetes, and other diseases, and whereas the Los Angeles, LA County Department of Public Health study on food insecurity confirms that CalFresh serves as a significant resource in the countywide approach to preventing food insecurity, helping low-income families and individuals insecure, increase their food purchase power, and raise their levels of nutrition, and whereas, in an effort to remove the barriers that discourage residents who are eligible for CalFresh but are not applying, the County Department of Public Social Services has launched an aggressive community outreach and social media campaign to increase CalFresh participation. And whereas the County Department of Public Social Services, Public Health, and Health Services, and partnering with 88 cities of the county, community, and faith-based partners, community health choices, food insecurity coalitions, supermarket chains, farmers' markets, food banks, and community colleges, university, and school district to enhance outreach for the eighth annual campaign. And now, therefore, Mayor Lozano, mayor of the city of Baldwin Park, including Mayor Pro Tem Ricardo Pacheco, councilmembers Cruz Baca, Monica Garcia, Susan Rubio, city treasurer Maria Contreras, and city clerk Alejandra Avila, do hereby join the county of Los Angeles in proclaiming May 2018 as CalFresh Awareness Month, and urge all residents to share information about the benefits of CalFresh program and those who desperately need it most. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, have the one for lupus awareness month, May 2018. Lupus commonly known as, excuse me, as an acute chronic complex and often life-threatening disease. Researchers estimate that 5 million people have been diagnosed with lupus or related disease throughout the world, and approximately 100,000 more are diagnosed every year. It has been estimated that more than 1.5 million Americans live with some form of lupus, and lupus strikes women of childbearing age, and it affects all aspects of their lives. And women of color develop lupus at a rate two to three times the rate that Caucasians develop lupus. Lupus impacts more than just the life of the patient, it affects their family, friends, coworkers, employers, and the community. And lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to symptoms of other illness. Early diagnosis and proper treatment are critical to improvements of the quality of life and survival rate of people with lupus. Increased public awareness, education, and research are key to winning the battle against lupus. Major gaps exist in the understanding of the cause and the consequences of lupus. So, I want to, we at this point, want to acknowledge all the individuals that are here to receive the proclamation, so I will ask the group for the lupus, and also the group for the Kids to Park Day, as well as the CalFresh Awareness, and the municipal city clerk, and also the Older American Month. So, why don't we bring everyone up here as a group for a picture?
Mayor.
Yes.
I would also like to acknowledge, not only because I see some of the staff from the California Mental Health, Elisa Jimenez and her wonderful staff, May is also Mental Health Month, and I want to acknowledge that as well. Thank you for all you do for our community, thank you.
Mayor, I also want to acknowledge a couple of people. Well, first of all, let me go back to the lupus awareness month, I just want to recognize the Mata Sisters, Estela and Juana, who have been such advocates, in fact, they just came back from Sacramento, received proclamation for their work around LA County, so we want to thank them more in particular for taking this on, and thank you for just, you know, showing your courage, we appreciate it. Secondly, I also, I'm sorry, can we give them a round of applause, please? Thank you. Yeah, and I also want to call up the ladies from the mental health services. We did have a presentation several weeks back called Wings, Women Inspiring the Next Generation of Sisterhood, they came over and helped us present to a group of about 50 young ladies, and so, I want to recognize them. We have also a certificate from the Office of the Assemblywoman, so please do come up so we can recognize you for that work you did, we really appreciate it on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Alright, so, at this point, do we have the groups? Yes, come on up.
Congratulations, thank you so very much. I remember the young ladies at the wings.
Everyone, everyone up here. You're gonna have to get a, take one up in the back, just everyone up here.
I think we could, I think we could.
Mayor, we'll group at a time.
We'll group at a time, okay, alright, okay. Okay, we're doing who? Okay, California Mental Health first.
I'm gonna have Veronica Lopez, who is a free representative for state assembly member Blanca Rubio, will be presenting some certificates, come on up here.
Good evening, everyone. Like the mayor said, my name is Veronica Lopez, and I represent Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio of the 48th Assembly District, and I have three certificates of recognition for Samantha Mena, Elisa Jimenez Hata, and Virginia Serrano, and it reads, "I join the city of Baldwin Park and the residents of the 48th Assembly District in thanking you for your participation at the 2018 Wings Summit, and command you on your commitment to provide loving support to the youth in our community." Samantha Mena and her colleagues are from the California Mental Health Center, which is right across the park, so, and we definitely want to thank them for their service. Thank you so much.
Oh, we don't? Okay, well, we'll include you next time.
We don't have one?
Alright, yeah, let's all get it. Come on over here.
You know what, we should do it like that. Out of here, then, after the teacher. Can you guys just move forward a little like a U, and it curves around?
It's like a U.
Yeah, a little bit tighter?
Yeah, because you see everyone.
Right over here, please, count three, one, two, hold it.
We are ready, one, two, three.
Okay, this is the camera.
The one that eats camera, man.
This is the new item. They count very much too old, and hopefully she's, we are good, thank you. Okay, next, we're done?
Okay, we're done with the mental health thing?
Right, one more picture.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
One young lady still wants a picture. Susan, Susan, here's one more photo, I'm sorry.
Alright, here we go.
Thank you.
We do.
Thank you, sir.
They're graduating.
Okay, we'll have to go visit.
Okay, we're gonna go and go with the next group. Can I ask Concepcion Hidobro to please step up here? Come up here. On behalf of the city Baldwin Park, we present her with a plaque that represents her great job as a volunteer, and also assisting not only the Senior Citizens Center, but also the Baldwin Park Unified School District, and of course, B-Place as well. Gracias, parte de la ciudad de Baldwin Park. And we also have one also for Eva Navarro. Eva Navarro? Wanna thank Eva, if you don't know Eva, you don't know our Senior Citizens Center in Baldwin Park, so I want to thank her very much, her husband, because her involved in just about every aspect in our city. Thank you, here we go.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take one with her. Do you have any others?
Veronica, the two honors.
Oh, who's taking the proclamation?
Verbal, probably.
Okay, let's get our picture and our photo. Pictures, okay, let me. Let's all get into here. Oh, sorry about that, hold on.
One more.
Ready, one, two.
Thank you, can you take one more? Alright, the next one, we have, is it CalFresh? Okay, where's the group, CalFresh? Oh, okay. Alright, the next one, we have, is it CalFresh? Okay, where's the group, CalFresh? Who's taking that one?
Congratulations to Kevin.
Okay, let's get it up.
Not right now.
Come on, Susan.
Good. Thank you. Alright, thank you, alright. Okay, the next one.
There's one more.
Lupus, yes, come on up.
Oh, yes, because I recognized her.
Miss print the certificate.
That's right here.
Right here, I have it.
We're organizing everybody.
Yes, here we go, ready? We're gonna get the camera call.
Count three, one, two, hold it. Next one.
Ready?
One, two, one, three, four.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. That is. Alright, the city clerk. Alrighty, Alejandra.
Mayor, really quickly, I failed to, I did mention the Mata Sisters, but all these young women up here are survivors, and so, I want to give all of them that came up here
up there involved that on a day-to-day basis do a lot of work, and I wish they were here,
a round of applause. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, now we're recognizing our city clerk.
but I want to thank them for all the work that they do, and for dealing with our community
I wish we had all of us up here.
always with a smile, so I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart.
Everybody's got.
Did you do this?
Yes, I did, I'm so sorry.
I was getting the flower.
You know, I'd like to invite the veterans to come on up, so we can get a picture with all of you, you all look wonderful in your hats, and please, come on up, since you're here, we'd love to recognize you with a quick photo. Where's the mayor?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for the invite.
Absolutely.
I always want to hi, where are you, want to recognize whoever you have the opportunity.
Hey, can you come here, can you come here?
Is that in front of us?
Vietnam vets.
Product of the 60s.
Thank you.
Lots of money.
Four. And we're recognizing the whole office. Yes. Do all of the.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Air Force.
Yes.
Thank you.
Army. Yes. Maybe Army.
Air Force. Air Force.
I have a friend.
Ready?
Yes.
Hold it tighter, please. Count three. One, two. Hold it. Next one.
Ready? One, two, one, three. Four. One more.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to share some words?
Would you like to share some words?
Yes, come on, come on. Absolutely. Does Ray want to share some words?
Commander.
Okay. Go ahead, Commander.
I'd like to thank the city of Baldwin Park for hosting us at their McNeil Center. And we'd like to speak to the council later when we have an open forum.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
Count three. One, two.
All right, thank you.
Thank you again. We appreciate you, gentlemen. Thank you. Now, how do I?
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is.
Much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hey, Manny? Oh, never mind, got it. I got it. All right, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Whoa, watch yourself, watch yourself. Hold on. One moment.
He's okay. He just made, no, he didn't fall.
Yeah, when I got the flowers.
He just kind of skipped. He kind of skipped.
Just throw that away. All righty, okay, so at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak? Please state your name. You have approximately three minutes. Good evening.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. I'm here to speak on behalf of my nephew, Daniel Sauceda, and Daniel Saragosa. I live at 3600 Van Wigg in Baldwin Park. And I just want to clarify and make sure, you know, my nephews are both considered, what the law says is 51/50s or mentally incapable of taking care of themselves. I asked the city of Baldwin Park at this time, as a city, I know the state and the county helps us out, but I want to bring awareness to this issue. You know, now, I just want to bring up to issue, my nephew, Daniel, on the backside, is Ramona Comlin. Now, there's a lot of people in here, but he's gone through traumatic deprivation to the mind. There's been a guy from the convalescent home hung himself on his backyard. Of course, I talked to him, which is one of the guys, Mr. Gutierrez, and I did more research and I did more research. And apparently, we had a conflict this day-to-day with my Daniel, which is my nephew, and I love him. And I just want the support of the city for whatever we could do to help them so they could maintain and be a part of society. I know that I try to control him. I know I try to love him and I try to give him my heart. But I ask you guys, you know, I know there's an issue with the police department, with the neighbor right now, that happened today, an altercation. And I just want the support of the city. I know we got the support of the county and I know his meds, but I want to bring awareness to mental schizophrenia and mental stuff that goes on. I know that a homeless shelter, I gotta take him so he could know the difference, where he can be, where he's gonna go. And, you know, if I don't be his godfather and I don't be his mentor and show him before his mom passes away, because he did lose his dad, and that's when more of these issues happen. He was a great student at Baldwin Park High School. He did a lot of accolades. I can make sure, I do the resources to make sure that I bring him to you and tell you, look at how good he was of a student. But that, Ramona Comlin, really, really, when I painted his house, I seen what was going on. Guy was yelling, "Help me, help me, help me." And basically, you know, I'm painting the house and I'm going, man, look at what he's going through. He was throwing mugs of coffee. And I want the police department to also know, the chief of police and the mayor, if they could help me. 3600 Van Wigg.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, I'll refer one of our law enforcement officers to speak to you. And I know that we have the mental health, I don't know if the group has left. If not, we could provide a referral for you, okay? So the gentleman, Captain Parnell, will assist you. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, at this point, move along with public communication. Okay, come on up. That's fine, that's fine.
Brand-new experience for me.
That's fine.
Learning protocol.
Good, good evening.
At 75. I'm learning protocol at 75. Okay, I'm a resident of Baldwin Park, as are my friends. We all live in the same complex. There's 10 families, 10 units. Through the years, I've voted and I know a lot of you. And now, we need help. Our property was recently sold after we were raised, our rent raised in January by the old owner, $25. Well, $25 is very reasonable. The new owners came in March and they raised us 40%. My rent went from $1,125 to $1,550. I think there ought to be some reprimand, some provision, something that stops outsiders from coming into Baldwin Park, buying up units and property and raising rent. This is not, of course, Beverly Hills. And they attached papers to my rent increase for a lot of cities that are, of course, high rent, to show me a comparison. It did no good to me because I don't agree with their way. So, I forgot where I was. What I want to ask is, is this lawful? Can they do this, raising you hundreds of dollars each family? It takes my whole security check and that is all I have. My husband passed away two and a half years ago, so our income was cut in half. I like to maintain where I am, stay where I am if I can, and I was doing fine with 15, less than $1,500, and my rent was $1,125. And I was making it. You can budget, you can cut down, you don't have to go, you know, everywhere that you want to go. But the thing is, you can't do it when your rent is higher than your income. They don't understand and they don't care. But we want to know, is there some provision, something that legal help, tenant advocates that can help us have the owners realize what they're doing and forcing all these families out? Also, can the city help relocate some of us, or me, or them, if they choose to? I don't have a job to rely on.
All righty, okay, the times I just want to let you know, we'll refer you over to Suzie Rialas from the Housing Department. I'm not certain if she's here this evening. Oh, she is, okay. I will refer you over to our Housing Director. Of course, it is very tough and we know that rent, that rent in general has skyrocketed everywhere, not just in Baldwin Park, and it's a shame, especially you've been there so many years. But Suzie Rialas to the right, or my, to my right here, will assist you and hopefully guide you in the possible, see what we can do.
Now, our units are 80 years old and they're comparing it to units that are probably 25 years old.
Oh, boy, okay.
And it's not fair that they try to do this to us. And is there a provision or a fund to help?
There are specific laws that pertain to, yeah, there are specific laws that pertain to renters and the amount the owners could impede on a renter. So Suzie here will assist you. Thanks, Suzie Rialas.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome. All right, at this point, move along with the public communication. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Neil Evans. I'm an attorney. And I'm talking with regard to item number 11, having to do with the towing contract. And I realize, and I represent Hadley Towing, and I realize that you have an option on the agenda today to either extend the existing operator who's had the contract for, I guess, about 10 years and give them more time, or allow it to go to bid. We're certainly proposing that the matter should go out to bid. And there is very good public reasons why you should allow something to go out to bid. Competition is obviously the first thing that comes to mind. But you have two very good operators in the city of Baldwin Park, including Hadley Towing. Hadley Towing has three acres of property in your city. It has more trucks, more employees, more facilities, the ability to provide excellent service in the city. And I understand the last time around, when this was addressed, four years ago, it was going to be a non-exclusive contract. In fact, there were going to be two operators. That changed at the last minute. Hadley Towing, just last night, at the City of Almonte and the City of Almonte City Council, had the same arguments in reverse, meaning Royal Coaches was trying to come into Almonte. And the interesting thing in that case is that there was a line of people complaining about Royal Coaches. And when it came to the point of making a vote to second a motion to allow Royal Coaches to be the second tow operator in Almonte, there was no second. You have an excellent operator in Hadley Towing, a company that's been in business for decades, a company that can provide excellent service to the city. And if you just extend an existing contract just for the sake of benefiting the operator, you're not serving the public interest. And in the state of California, there's a law that requires state agencies to put all contracts out to government bid. And the reason why that exists is to protect the public interest, to avoid favoritism, to avoid political favors, to do the things that protect the public and give an interest in the public. So I realize it might be convenient or easy to say, well, Royal Coaches hasn't done a bad job, they're okay, we're okay. But that's not really the purpose of an RFP, is to just say, we're going to rubber stamp an existing operator. If you put it out for an RFP, and I realize you're going to have to extend the existing operator for some period of time, because the existing contract, I think, expires May 18th. So I think there's been some assumption, if appropriate, that their contract is going to be extended without an RFP. But there should be an RFP. And the benefit to the public is that you have two operators that should be performing this service. And having two operators is obviously better than one. And there's no public reason not to give my client an opportunity to bid on an RFP. If it prevails, or if you decide at that point you need two operators, or the city would benefit from two operators, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I happen to be the compliance officer for Ratty Corporation, which is one of the entities that is applying for the cannabis permits that are now, you know, being processed through your city here. I'd like to just quickly introduce a little bit of our team that we have put together here. We have a pretty impressive technical team with the idea, this is not just to be a growing operation, but actually a production of high-quality products for the medical industry. That's our focus. My background, I was very glad to see you recognize the vets. I'm a veteran. I started my career in the U.S. Navy as a nuclear engineer. Later became a engineering lab technician. So I got very involved in the procedures of how to make sure something is clean, pure, and exactly what we want. Later on, I went on to work for Varian Ultrasound as, wow, totally blank here, as, you know, doing their compliance, making sure everything is, you know, all the particular equipment is up to spec, you know, quality control, you know, specifically. So I've had a very long and interesting career in many areas, in engineering, from if you just extend an existing contract just for the sake of benefiting the operator, you're not serving the public interest. And in the state of California, there's a law that requires state agencies to put all contracts out to government bid, and the reason why that exists is to protect the public interest, to avoid favoritism, to avoid political favors, to do the things that protect the public and, and give an interest in the public. So I realize it might be convenient or easy to say, well, Royal Coaches hasn't done a bad job, they're okay, we're okay, but that's not really the purpose of an RFP, is to just say, we're going to rubber stamp an existing operator. If you put it out for an RFP, and I realize you're going to have to extend the existing operator for some period of time, because the existing contract, I think, expires May eighteenth, so I think there's been some assumption, if, if appropriate, that their contract is going to be extended without an RFP, but there should be an RFP, and the benefit to the public is that you have two operators that should be performing this service, and having two operators is obviously better than one, and there's no public reason not to give my client an opportunity to bid on an RFP. If it prevails, or if you decide at that point you need two operators, or the city would benefit from two operators, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jay Potter. I happen to be the compliance officer for Ratty Corporation, which is one of the entities that is applying for the cannabis permits that are now, you know, being processed through your, your city here. Uh, I'd like to just quickly introduce a little bit of our team that we have put together here. We have a, a pretty impressive technical team with the idea, this is not just a, to be a growing operation, but actually a production of high-quality products for the medical industry. That's our focus. Um, my background, I, I was very glad to see you recognize the vets, I'm a veteran. Uh, I started my career in the U.S. Navy as a nuclear engineer, later became a engineering lab technician, so I got very involved in the procedures of how to make sure something is clean, pure, and exactly what we want. Uh, later on, I went on to, uh, work for Varian Ultrasound as, uh, uh, huh, wow, totally blank here, uh, as, you know, doing their compliance, uh, making sure everything is, you know, all the in particular equipment is up to spec, you know, quality control, you know, specifically. So I, I've had a very long and interesting career in many areas, in engineering, from nuclear to solar to, uh, computer programming, I taught at the university level in research, so I have a very, very broad background that I'm bringing in to Ratty. I'm also the general technical consultant for Niche and Technology, who's also being involved in your community, and both of these organizations are, uh, very focused on benefiting the veterans. Uh, we're working with the Veterans Administration right now in, uh, providing them CBD oil, and also, on the other side, for the Veterans Association for, uh, providing homes for the homeless vets, you know, from the two different organizations. So, uh, we're here to benefit the city, and we hope that you take great consideration for our entity as, as far as the permits for the cannabis operation here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, councilpeople, Baldwin Park residents. Uh, one of the council persons, uh, on twelve nineteen, weed consultant, gave this person four thousand four hundred dollars. This is the part that's really ridiculous, people. The city attorney gave the same person two thousand five hundred. I, I tell myself, what the world's going on? That ain't bad. Let me continue. A tow company, which I'll say its name because they charge people ridiculous prices, Royal Coach, gave that person four thousand four hundred dollars on the thirty-first of December. The tow company also gave her, that person, a hundred dollars. It seems like to us, this person voted on or around this time for the marijuana situation. Also on the twelve twenty, donated two thousand dollars. So it seems like to some of us residents is, you people are, how should I say it, white-collar thieves. City attorney, this is bad, bad, he donated to that person one thousand nine hundred dollars. I think we pay him too much. Assistant city attorney, the other gentleman, or whoever he may be, he gave that individual two thousand dollars. Now, you think the city attorney, because he works for the whole city, or us residents, I don't know, maybe he works independently. Why are you giving somebody like that, that you don't, you're backing that person, you work for the city of Baldwin Park, you don't work as an individual. Maybe when you leave here, you do, but you don't. Further down the road, another one, a thousand dollars. So you know what? It seems to us that the white-collar job works pretty good. Another situation, fifteen, one thousand five hundred dollars, and they're looking at me with some pretty evil-looking eyes. Further down, another donation, so claimed, four thousand four hundred. Ladies and gentlemen, residents of Baldwin Park, these people don't work for us. The last one, four thousand four hundred again.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Oh, by the way, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. All right, Mulan with public communication.
Good evening, city Baldwin Park and residents. Gabriel Ramirez, resident of El Monte. As you all know, I was, um, you know, last night in El Monte, they, uh, there was no second motion with towing services with Royal Coaches, and I want to speak for the record and as, and from experience, um, I forgot to, to submit on the complaint for the record, uh, with Royal Coaches, there was an issue that we had, and with, with our, because we had AAA service with them, and one thing I do find it is very, uh, very disturbing, and I want to let you know for the record, I know it's in El Monte, but I want to let you know here for the record before you guys make a decision. Um, it's very, I was myself, my mom, and my, my father were victims of the owner really, very to the point with very unprofessional, where we're trying to ask for, you know, with a service, because our service wasn't, wasn't properly well, and so we had to go to, uh, to the Honda dealer, and they told us to go with, uh, with the company to make sure to work with them. So we went, and very highly rude from the owner, screaming at my own mother, unprofessional, and a very rude, rude of tone voice, and I opposed that to the city council of El Monte, and thankfully, they, they did not motion it, and I really highly recommend that you guys really look into, it's not, it's not fabricated lies, it's not, uh, what they think they're going to be saying, it's, I'm claiming for the record, and I apologize for not putting on, you know, uh, make a complaint because of fear retaliation. So I would really, really hope for the city of Baldwin Park to really, really look at the options of not just Royal Coaches, but other towing services and do, and really benefit for the residents as well, to make sure that, that they're, they're not being cheated, that they feel that it's going to be transparency, and have other options open of competitive with the towing services. And so I want to bring it up here, so before, if I get shade thrown out, this is a fact, not fabricated lies, or, or any political movements, or, or paid, I'm not paid, I'm just speaking for the record, and speaking as a real-life experience that I had with them. And I suggest to do the right thing, and hopefully Baldwin Park residents are hearing this, and, uh, I'll make it loud and clear this message. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mulan with public communication.
Good evening, mayor, mayor pro temp, council members, staff, and residents of Baldwin Park. I'm Christina Larios, library manager at the Baldwin Park Library, and I just wanted to let everybody know about two programs that are coming up. This Saturday, May fifth, at three P.M., we will have a special magic show with Christopher T., magician. He will incorporate reading and magic together in one show this Saturday at three P.M. And also, coming up on Tuesday, May fifteenth, we will be celebrating Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and we will have the Polynesian Paradise dancers at the library at six thirty P.M. This is a family show for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, Mulan with public communication.
Hello, I'm Rogelio Magaña, I'm back again. Today I have a very particular agenda. First and foremost, I want to congratulate you for your decision of allowing ten more licenses, whether I am one or not, it'll benefit your community. Today I'll focus my attention on the veterans. For the last month, my organization has been dealing with the veteran affairs. As you know, the House Appropriation Committee has passed a law allowing the vets to, to actually use CBD without any repercussions, and that's a win-win-win. I congratulate the Senate for that as well. We are working with the Veterans Administration for the homeless situation, and my Niche and Technologies Company will address that. The vets that are here, I welcome you to come and give me your names and all, I need all of the information I can. Working with the vets has been very delightful, but wow, there's so much red tape. Either way, I hope that Baldwin Park is one more of our facilities that will be able to provide this incredible, incredible herb to, to the veterans who are suffering from, from very serious PTSD like my son. I am an advocate of, of, of helping the vets in any way I can, and I'm very fortunate to have an incredible, incredible team, incredible organizations, willing to work with every single one of you. I'm very much looking forward. Thank you all for your time, and, uh, gentlemen, we are here to help you, and we will help if you, if you want it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mulan with public communication.
John Reals, resident. I don't need a translator this time. Uh, one of the things on your item number eleven, you know, that's one of the things that I've been reading on. We have a population of seventy-five, eighty thousand people, because just the fees for the city is three hundred and thirty-four thousand seventy, and then for the vendors, three hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and thirteen in total. But all the other cities, Almonte, Beverly Hills, Glendale, Glendora, Huntington Park, Euwendale, you know, Manobello, San Fernando, West Covina, none of them come close to what we are charging the residents of Baldwin Park. You know, and that the populations doesn't jive, you know, it's something that, you know, the city council, I don't care what you do on the side, or whatever you do, but don't punish the residents of Baldwin Park, okay? That's one thing that you have to do. Remember in November, it's election time, okay? So right now, do the right thing, we'll see. You don't, well, we'll see too, okay? Since the last time that I talked to you, Mr. Lozano, about your attitude and everything, the same day, you threw somebody under the bus. You know, the state should control the ones that are going to be moving all that weed all over, you know, it's a monopoly. I talked to some lawyers, they're friends of mine, they said, it's a monopoly. What are they talking about? What kind of lawyers do you guys have? You know, read the law first before you say it isn't. Go ahead, smile, Robert. Okay. Are you through Mrs. Rubio under the bus? She wanted the state to get involved in something like that, to give one individual. It's like, I have my farm, I'm going to have somebody else come in and take my stuff? Come on, be serious, think about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mulan with public communication, anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor, councilmembers, residents, my name is Richard Santos, I'm the commander of post five oh eight, okay, and, uh, purpose of my visit here tonight is to develop a partnership. Uh, we've been working with April Rojo, and using your facilities at the McNeil Center, Senior Center, and I was wanting to introduce the members of past commanders, Ray Rojas, John Figueroa, Steve Lopez, and Domingo Salmerlin. We're here to provide services to the community, as well as veterans helping veterans, okay? So if we could meet with a council member to further discuss our, our programs, our agendas, we have a boy state where we have high school students from Baldwin Park that we're sending to Sacramento this, this summer to, to learn government, so if we could possibly meet one of the council members, it'd be nice that we could bring our programs to the, to the city. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very much, looking forward, and we're definitely scheduled meeting to meet with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
I just want to mention, if you want to connect with our, with Manny Carillo, our director of recreation and community services, and Manny, you have my permission to give him my cellphone, so he can contact me directly.
Yes, and mine is, would you please?
Greg Tuttle, business owner. Um, on your number eleven, it says exemplary, uh, performance, okay? When you have a company that is, has severe code violations from building on, from their office on, a body shop that was illegally done, we've had to code-enforce that street numerous times to finally get the fire department to red curb it, and this is not exemplary. And also, they need to fix the code violations, because you have other businesses fixing their violations, but not Royal Coaches. Now on to this thing here. If you proceed with this, we will sue the city. This is not right to not go out to an RFP. I don't care what your city attorney drums up or anything else with the municipal code. He's been numerous times wrong with the weed deal, so this is another time for this. Also, you have documents in front of you. This is a civil grand jury that I told you the last time that I met with these people, and they give you examples on how to do contracts the right way and how they want these contracts done. This was done by the grand jury in L.A. It shows council members like Monica Garcia shouldn't be taking forty-four hundred dollars from Royal Coaches. They don't want you to receive cars or donations. They want this a neutral deal, but that's not how this thing works in Baldwin Park. I supplied you with Willie's sheet, it's called a rap sheet. Mayor, you know, with two brothers always being arrested, what a rap sheet's about. And Bill has a problem with drugs, Bill has a problem with, uh, driving under the influence, and Bill has a problem with, uh, assault with a deadly weapon. Oh, yes, they were, they were expunged, but it's still the same person, okay? Still the same person. People don't change, just for the moment. Also, this staff has failed to prove that this contract benefits the city by having one Royal Coaches, or not having two companies do the same thing, or a different company do it, and we make more money, honestly, instead of giving campaign donations out. Out of the twelve cities, our city is the highest in charges. They show nine hundred dollars for a one-day storage. Yes, a lot of that, half of that is because of the city's fees, and half of it's Royal Coaches. Then the people go to pick up their car from impound, and they're always missing stuff out of their cars, like cell phones, baby seats, carjacks, and everything else. Royal Coaches has illegally built the body shop behind, they're illegally operating on this, behind the smog shop on auto body using the smog shop's license. I just noticed that the other day. This thing has to be done, which I will turn in to your code enforcement prob, people. This is not exemplary company. This is called shady business, and done because they get council approval for it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, all right.
Margarita Vargas, good evening. Um, you know that you don't like to follow the rubber rules of order, but at least I think you need to follow the agenda. Um, I told you, I think this is, this is my second time that I'm telling you, if you report the close session before you open the meeting, how is it going to be in the minutes? So according to the agenda, the report from close sessions should be after draw call. So I, I hope that somebody reminds you to follow the agenda. I don't know who's supposed to do that, the city clerk or the lawyer, I don't know. Um, the other thing is, um, on Monday, you know, with the construction of the streets, I don't know how many streets are doing, but on Monday was a mess for all the people, they take the kids to school. Baldwin Park High School, Gettys, Santa Fe, Holland, Margaret Heat, they're all were really upset, all the parents, because they took, my daughter took an hour to get to, from BP to, um, to, uh, heat, because all the streets were closed, and they were not even working, because it was sprinkling. So, you know, I don't know who does the planning or who does that, but they had to be more conscious of the, um, the hours of the, the parents going to schools, you know, in the morning, and then the afternoon when they get out, because it's really a mess. Then now in a good, something good, I'd like to invite you from the water, I thought the, the manager was going to be here, to, um, water awareness celebration, it's going to be Thursday, May seventeen, from ten to one, and we're going to have, um, a lot of information, refreshment, we're going to have hamburgers, and, um, um, plants there, you know, they don't need a lot of water, we're going to give them away. So we hope that you go there, it's going to be in the Nixon, Clinton Nixon facility, the, the one where the tanks are in Baldwin Park Boulevard, and the address is fourteen two three three John Bridge Street in Baldwin Park. So I hope you can make it, we always invite you, but I know it's in the daytime, but maybe somebody can make a time to be there. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, we have one of our veterans. Come on up, thank you.
Mayor, I apologize, uh, our commander, elected, just wanted to let you know we're having an event this Sunday at McNeil Julia, and it's a salsa dance, it's a Mother's Day salsa dance, and our food, it's a fundraiser, and this is how we get our funds for our particular programs, whether it be scholarships, or the schools for all the kids, and the veterans, of course. And just to mention also, we're involved with Vet Hunters, and if there's any information that you guys need, we'll be able to do that for you. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on a public hearing? Public communication.
First off, I'd like to say good evening.
Good evening.
Esteemed council, Mayor Lozano, um, I'm here as a community activist. I just wanted to speak truth to power. Uh, I'm here this evening to address Councilwoman Rubio, track record of being dishonest to her constituents. Time and time again, she talks about the importance of transparent government agencies and proper oversight of taxpayer money. Uh, if you go back and listen to the recordings of several council meetings, you will hear her say time and time again that she is a keeper and protector of communities' taxpayer money. She represents herself as an art and steward of taxpayer money. However, the only thing she commits to doing is spending her community's money, because the irony in all this is that she herself doesn't pay her taxes. Councilwoman Rubio has failed to pay property taxes in the years of two thousand and four, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, let me catch my breath, and two thousand and thirteen on her home. For over a half dozen years, the county of Los Angeles was chasing her to pay her taxes, plus fines and second fines, which finally resulted in a foreclosure of her home. She was provided notices of default on at least two occasions over a span of nine years for not paying taxes and not paying her mortgage. Ms. Rubio has abused the system to her advantage and gave authorization to short-sell her home, which resulted in nearly the forgiveness of two hundred thousand of her mort, mortgage. Um, in addition to that, under federal and banking law, she should have been forced to vacate her home. Somehow, through more lies and dishonesty, our councilwoman used her influence to remain in her home. Wouldn't we all like to have such a privilege? I'm sure there are many of her constituents who aren't as fortunate. Um, surprisingly, with collusion between her own roommate, Norma Silva, and her roommate's brother, the new owner investor was able to buy the house in a short sale of a hundred and seventy thousand under market value. I'm almost done. Approximately, the evidence shows that the new buyer directly paid the property taxes to the county of Los Angeles. Ms. Rubio never paid property taxes on her home, yet she continues to sit here on the dais every month and decide how to spend our taxpayer money. The broker has to provide a broker's price opinion, and Ms. Rubio had a financial relationship with her broker, because she was with her broker because she was living there and paying her rent with Ms. Rubio. Lastly, it was noted that the buyer's real estate agent was Norma Silva's brother. There appears to be a lot of collusion between Councilwoman Rubio and her roommate.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving along with public communication, anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor.
Yes. Excuse me. What was your name? Yes. For the record.
Community organizer? For the record.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right. So move along. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Dr. Richard Senna. My doctorate degree is in humanities. I retired in 1983, and I've spent 35 years providing for widows and orphans, especially single mothers, especially who lose their homes or their living facilities. I bought a 35-room house in Altadena, and I took care of 15 teenage boys that were living out on the street. And there's thousands of them in this city. I'm talking about Los Angeles County area. What I've learned over the years in trying to provide for these people is that we are under attack. Our health. And I know there's a lot of controversy about medical marijuana, but I also know that the United Nations, through their protocols 1 through 20, require that all drinking or food must have toxins in them that are all based from a molecule, an oil derivative called benzene, which is the leading cause of disease in this country. Now, when you're considering who to bring in to provide medical marijuana, you should realize that it's very critical that it be done properly. And the federal and state also requires this. There are products being developed right now to chelate benzene out of the body, and there's no other way that's been developed, because it's an oil derivative. It's not water soluble, so the body cannot eliminate benzene. But there's new products that are in coordination with medical marijuana that can chelate all the benzene out of our bodies and bring health back to this country. So please consider that when you're, I've joined this organization, and I've used my 35 years of research to help them provide health for this nation. Thank you.
All right. Good evening.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Carlos Barrera. I come to speak on behalf of the RAD group, and I would like to introduce the idea of how this industry of the medical marijuana aspect is lacking the essence of the medical approach, compassionate care. All this has turned into a big-business model, and this group provides, the gentleman that came before for this group, Dr. Richard Senna, Dr. Chang with Nichen Technologies, they develop housing, that develop houses in a matter of hours with innovative technology. You got Dr. Jay Potter, same thing with Nichen. You have Dr. Nate with Nichen, and you have the CBD approach we're taking to work with the veterans affairs, where they're trying to treat the veterans with CBD because, you know, the medicinal properties and the opioid crisis and the lack of compassionate care. So with this group right here, I understand they were denied on the first go-around for the licensing, and I really want you to understand that this group does provide that, a medical approach, compassionate care. And everybody's trying to make profit, and we're just taking an honest approach for this. They want to help the community and develop products with CBD and THC to help the community. I know an individual that suffers from this situation where he started taking opioids, and real brilliant kid, he was working at the group for JPL, the internship, and he started taking opioids, and it really messed him up. He got into some trouble. He became, I guess, mental incompetent or chemical imbalance, and this is a real crisis in America, as we all know. So for the city of Baldwin Park issuing the licensing, we want you to understand you have to consider groups like this, because the doctors are here to help, and these groups provide that, and the criteria right here is more than excellent. So we want you to understand that what our group brings. I've worked with other companies that are doing this only for the profit, and this group, of course, wants to make money, but we want to help the community, not only here in Baldwin Park, but throughout Southern California. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Move along with public communication. I'll see no interest, and I'll declare the public communication. Oh, come on up. That's fine. That's fine. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Veronica Tomas. I'm a resident from El Monte, and I came here to speak about the item for Royal Coaches towing. I understand that Baldwin Park wants to extend the contract up to 10 years with this tow company instead of opening up the bids, which would seem to be illegal and unfair. Yesterday in El Monte, we, our council had a vote. A councilman had put Royal Coaches back on the agenda for services, and there was no second motion. So, you know, I hope this sends a message or starts a trend. I hope this will send a message or start a trend that other cities will follow. It's no secret that Royal Coaches funds politicians. We, the community, don't profit from this. The community ends up suffering. Baldwin Park has been in the spotlight since the infamous 2012 checkpoint with regards to toes and tow companies. What's important to note is that there was a civil grand jury investigation, 2016, 2017, when I received their report last year. It is available online. It's many pages long, and it's in regard to police contracted tow companies. Baldwin Park is in there. El Monte is in there. Azusa, West Covina, cities who use Royal Coaches as their contracted tow company, and it's not favorable. It's not favorable. One of the recommendations by the civil grand jury is to, for politicians to post on a public website any gifts they have received from vendors, especially tow company, you know, especially with the tow company, for the public to view that, because, you know, it's important for us to know, you know, if politicians are receiving gifts from vendors for their votes. And I would really ask that you please open up the bidding, which would seem the fair thing to do at this point, because I don't remember when there was bidding up for Royal Coaches in Baldwin Park. Their contract just keeps extending and extending, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Move along with public communication. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Emmanuel Estrada. I'm a resident in Baldwin Park, and I just wanted to talk about, real quick, about a rent control. We just saw somebody that's currently dealing with that issue, and actually, there's nothing anybody can do about rent increases right now, because there's no rent control in the city. Municipalities are in charge of putting in rent control, and I just wanted to kind of urge all of you to put in rent control before this becomes a bigger issue. All around Los Angeles County, people are being evicted and kicked out of their homes because there's no, there's nothing regulating these, and kids and families and children, mothers, single mothers, working-class residents are being kicked to the curb to make room for larger profit margins. And so I know you guys have been talking about taking care of the elderly, the homeless. I've seen you guys at the meetings, and there's a very strong correlation between mental health, physical health, and the mental stress that rent control, that high rents put on people. There's a connection between the education that children have and having to move them from school to school because they can no longer afford rent. There's a lot of correlation, and if you put in rent control and we start talking about affordable housing, we could actually take care of the elderly, veterans, the immigrant families, the working class, and our children. So I would really urge you to really move on this issue and, you know, and take approach and just really set an example for the rest of the San Gabriel Valley before we too become like Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmanuel. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak under public communication? Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, officer chief. I haven't been here for a while. Been busy. What I hear, I come back and pretty much the same. The only advice I can give, and this is not even my advice, I think what we all need is discernment for decisions, is somewhere along the line, we're making wrong decisions. And I hear the brothers and sisters out in the audience, and I hear that they're speaking things about you members, and, I mean, I don't know. It says in the Word of God, "Take the speck out of your own eye before you..." I think you know the scripture. Also, sweep around your own front porch before you're pointing fingers at others. And in Proverbs, it reads, "He who hates disguises it with his lips and lays up deceit with himself. When he speaks kindly, do not believe him, for there are seven abominations in his heart; though his hatred is covered by deceit, his wickedness will be revealed before the assembly. Whoever digs a pit will fall into, and he who rolls a stone will have it roll back on him." Brothers and sisters, we're not promised tomorrow. We can't serve two masters. I know that money is, we need that in today's world and society, but put the Father first. And if any of this stuff is true to anyone out here or in front of me, clean it up. We're not promised tomorrow. God's day. One day at a time, because, like I said, we're not promised tomorrow, so just a little piece of advice. And this brother back here that said that we don't change, brother, we change. I wasn't Mr., I'm not Mr. Righteous, but God will change your life, guaranteed. All you have to do is get on your knees, put your hands up, and surrender, just like we do. If you're doing something wrong, you know you're doing something wrong, and these officers are going to roll up on you. Get down on your knees, put your hands up. Only the wicked flee what no one pursues. I just say, you guys are young, you have life. Do it right, guys, because people are watching. Be the examples. Again, that's all I'm saying. God bless. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Moving along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. If not, I will now declare the public communication closed.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor. Well, I feel I need to speak up on behalf of all victims of domestic violence. I am a victim of domestic violence. Last council meeting, my abuser was mentioned in this dais. It wasn't me, but I was told that he was going to send someone to attack me, and so to that, I will say, unfortunately, the restraining order doesn't stop anybody else from attacking me, since he can't come to this podium. And so once again, I ask all victims who are currently going through the same thing to stay strong. Speak up and don't stay quiet. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Susan Rubio. All right. At this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the, we're going into the consent calendar. Councilmembers wishing to pull any item?
Yes. Number six and seven.
All right. So Councilmember Cruz Baca is requesting number six and seven. Okay. One moment. Right with you?
And five.
Six. And five. Five. That one, okay. All right. So Councilmember is wishing to pull any other items? If not, I'll go ahead and motion to move consent calendar's items with the exception of both items number five, five, six, and seven. That's my motion. Second. Any objections? See none, so move. All right. The first one that we have requested by Councilmember Cruz Baca is the second reading of ordinance, which has to do with the cannabis. So at this point, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
I would like to bring this item back. The item that concerns me is number 1412, only because, as I mentioned at the council meeting a couple of weeks ago, there is litigation pending, and I need some clarification as to what really is mandated by the state. And also, I would like some clarification. I would like to make a motion that we move forward with all items except for ordinance number 1412.
I'll second it.
The second? Any objections?
Mayor, I'll make a substitute motion to move the items forward.
All right. Okay. So at this point, there's item, I just want to say, okay, so the substitute motion will go ahead. I just have a question on the 1412. And I would like to, I know that there's 49 years. I would like to refer to 20-year contract.
So mayor, I'd like to make a motion, then, to move these items, all these items forward with the change that you're proposing.
Then I'll go ahead.
Mayor, I would like to.
Okay. Second, that motion. Second? Okay.
Well, I want to just point out for the record that this is the item that was first given a monopoly, then it was reduced to 49 years. We have 15 total permits, and none of them have this type of exception. I would like to add that I would like for that particular contract to be equitable. That means that all 15 look the same and are given the same treatment, instead of having 49-year contract to do a five-year review like everyone else. I also would like to recommend that we remove language that is very different from all other contracts. I spent some time reviewing these contracts, and that is the only one, once again, that is allowed to transfer the permit to someone else without council approval. That puts our city in danger, because just like a liquor license, once again, we cannot transfer a liquor license. It goes back to, you know, the decision-makers for review again, so we can vet the new person getting this permit. Also, I would like to point out that we're currently being sued because of this permit, and I would like to add that if you're going to approve this permit, then they need to reimburse the taxpayers for all the legal fees that currently were being incurred by the city council and the city, and that is taxpayer money. So if we can agree that they need to pay for those legal fees, we can reduce it to a five-year review process like all the other contracts, and that it's not transferable because it puts our community in danger, then I would agree with that motion.
All right. So at this point, there was a motion by Councilmember Monica Garcia, by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, and is there an objection? Any objections?
Yes, if it's, we don't include some of the items that we discussed, because, again, this is our taxpayer money, and it puts our community in danger.
All right. So at this point, I will ask our city clerk, Maria Contreras, if we could conduct the, oh, Alejandro Abidal, sorry about that. Thank you very much.
Oh, mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm confused. Are we voting for the amendment that Councilmember Rubio said to go ahead and include the language that all the other, all the other ordinances or all the other licenses, and also for the legal fees to be reimbursed back to the city? And also to, what was the third one? The third language?
The language for transfer.
Oh, the language for the transfer of the property. Basically, it would be the same as all the other 14 licenses, and to shorten, which would include the five years and no transfer of business and...
Remove the monopoly.
And no transfer of business.
Of the license.
Of the license.
That's fine.
So I'm confused. What are we voting for?
Okay. First of all, is that Councilmember Monica Garcia made a substitute motion that was also seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. So let's vote on that one, and that is to pass the current ordinance, the hearing, with the changes on ordinance 1412. So it will go from 49 years to 20 years, and that's what stands. So that's the first vote, and then we'll go to the second one.
That's the only change. That's the only change.
So we are ignoring the fact that we're paying legal fees for this company, who's a third party. This is, they're not even part of our city, number one, and we are allowing them to transfer this license, which is very sensitive to our community. We are allowing them to literally take the cannabis in and out without coming to city council for approval if they decide to forego that license. So I want the community to understand. So I want the community to understand that that is a dangerous situation to be in when we don't know who has control of that permit for the next twenty years, as Councilmember Monica Garcia is suggesting. I still believe that they should be reviewed every five years, just like all the other contracts. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, and let's go ahead and take the vote and then we'll have conversation.
All right, so at this point, the, uh, the, at this point, we're gonna go ahead and go back to the actual vote, which is, uh, the substitute, uh, motion by Councilmember Monica Garcia, that we pass all the ordinance with the change on item fourteen twelve. Uh, Legal Counsel, yes, go ahead. So fourteen twelve, which is going to go from forty-nine years to twenty, which is the one I had proposed, and it was seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Yes, go ahead. That's fine. All right, okay, so at this point, go ahead, yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't want a monopoly in our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Baca?
No, the legal fees concern me because it is taxpayer money and I would like to see that the city get reimbursed for that, because it is not the taxpayers' fault that we're in the middle of litigation with this.
All right. Yes, okay, so the motion passes three, two.
May I make one point of information, Mayor? I do wanna make it very clear that the ordinance itself states that none of these permits are transferable, so that, um, even if a, um, development agreement were to say that, um, the ordinance will trump any development agreement.
Mayor, may I make a comment to that?
Yes.
So, Legal Counsel, if you can entertain my question. So, is every, does every contract have the same language, the exact same language? Are they all the same?
No.
In terms of transferability?
No.
They're, so they're not the same. So this one in particular, when I reviewed it, it had language that no other one had, and I believe it was, that it, that they were able to transfer it to the successor in interest. So what that means, that it is transferable. Am I wrong?
Well, um, the ordinance says that it's not transferable, so it, uh, doesn't matter what the development agreement says, uh, but no, you're not wrong.
So then, he just said it doesn't matter that, uh, because the ordinance trumps this, so let's remove that language. If the language indeed does not matter and it's not transferable, then why do we need that different language in that contract? Why not remove it? So I would suggest that we remove that language, since it doesn't matter. So I challenge my colleagues, if it's not transferable, at any given time, let's remove that language from that contract.
Legal Counsel, go ahead.
Um, that, that certainly would be an option available to the council.
So I, I don't know if I could substitute it and say that, uh, again, if it's not transferable, let's remove that language. It doesn't matter, according to what I just heard, then let's remove that language and make it equitable and let's have all the licenses, or permits, rather, say the same exact thing. Without that language, it doesn't matter, let's remove that sentence from that contract.
Mayor, I, I would say I'm just, we already voted on this and it's completed.
Okay, we'll move on. All right, okay, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next, um, item that we have here. Okay, so at this point, we're gonna go over to the, uh, public hearing that we have, which is the nine, uh, yes.
Number six and seven.
Oh, that's right, that's right. So let me go to six. Sorry about that. Six, requested by Councilmember Cruz Baca, the second reading approval of ordinance number fourteen oh six, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballin Park, California, amending chapter fifty of the Ballin Park Municipal Code and enacting a new section in chapter fifty related to mandatory commercial and multifamily recycling. All right.
Um, and, um, I understand, because there was an explanation, but I remember that I did request two weeks ago, um, to get some type of a cost as to what this is going to cost, the multifamily and also the commercial. And I didn't see any of that in the, the staff report, unless I missed something. Who, is that you, Sam?
Yeah, the, uh, the staff report does, does not include the cost.
Yes, and I had asked for that two weeks ago, so that I, you know, so that our businesses and our multifamily, I understand, because you did explain it, it was, and I did understand the explanation. However, I wanted to see what the cost would be. Do you know what the cost will be? Uh, because I'm sure that there's going to be a cost that the businesses and the multifamilies are, uh, buildings are going to have to absorb.
Yes, I, I'd like to ask, uh, Terry to come up and, um, and help us out. These, uh, these rates were approved by City Council, um, two years ago.
Yes.
And, uh, for the, uh, organics, uh, recycling, which was part of that, uh, approval, uh, was included in there for the units. I, I don't recall, uh, what that amount is, but I can definitely get that to you.
Okay.
Um, so first of all, I wanted to just clarify that with the organics law, there's three different ways that a business can satisfy the law. One is to donate organics to a nonprofit, a food bank, a food security program. The other one is for them to self-haul it themselves. And many grocery stores, um, Costco's, large types of, you know, companies that have large amounts of food, they already are doing that, where they're themselves backhauling it to a distribution, a warehouse someplace, and then they're, then they're going ahead and doing the, um, that type of recycling. So there's, that's an option. The other one is if they want to subscribe to services with us, the, the rates were passed two years ago, as you said, for a cart, an organics cart that they can have, one day a week service is seventy-nine dollars and thirty-four cents a month. And that's pretty much what we're offering at this point, because what's left in a lot of cases with these are the smaller businesses that maybe aren't gonna have large amounts to backhaul to a distribution center. And whenever we talk to customers, we always make sure they understand that there's those three different options. And in doing so, trying to help them to figure out what works best for them. There is a flyer that's gonna be in their, um, their bill coming up that explains the law, explains their options, um, to contact the city if they have questions, that, 'cause they do have to report if they're doing the other types, if they're backhauling or if they're donating, they have to report that to the city, who then reports it to the state, which contributes to the overall diversion rate for the city. So it's something that the state of California is requiring all businesses to do, is the organics recycling and regular recycling.
Okay, so could we put that in the now as well? Because I know that some of the businesses, Manny, I know that some of the businesses will be asking, uh, well, I, I know that it's, it's strictly restaurants and so forth, anybody that has organic waste, in other words. And I understand all of that. So as long as that we can get some clarification, so that, you know, they know that they have options, other than paying the seventy-nine dollars or whatever you said, uh, per month, bless you. Um, whatever, whatever it is, you know, so that that way they know their, their options. Thanks.
Sure, I could work with Manny and, and Sam to put together something for the now, definitely.
And also, maybe on our website? Yeah, so that we could, yes.
Yeah, there's information on our website and also on the city's website that explains the law and explains the different options they can do already.
Okay.
We'll just remind them to go check it out if they want more information.
All right, thanks. I make a motion that we pass item number...
Second.
Oh, I have to read the whole thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, la, la, la. All right, go ahead.
Um, the second reading and approval of ordinance number fourteen oh six, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballin Park, California, amending chapter fifty of the Ballin Park Municipal Code and enacting a new section in chapter fifty related to mandatory commercial and multifamily recycling. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, that's seconded by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See none, so move. Item seven, requested by Councilmember Cruz Baca, the exclusive negotiation agreement ENA between the City Ballin Park and MG Development Group for purchase of city-owned former Caltrans lots on Garvey Avenue. Yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Uh, I would like for this item to be brought back to June. Um, I had asked, um, the gentleman that gave us the presentation, Michael, I believe is his first name, um, to please give us some type of, when we had a lot of different, of how we would like some of the architectural design to look or changes in that. Um, so if we could please bring this back to June?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Uh, so that we could please bring, bring it back to June, so that he can, I know that, that this is, um, the part of the ENA, and I, and I understand, is so that he can do some of that, but I would really, before we proceed, I would really like to see what the changes are that he has made to the existing designs that he showed us.
All right, okay. Yes, got it.
Mayor, I would, I would request that we move forward, that it would be premature to ask him to do those architectural drawings right now, we're just, we need to just at least get an estimate, how much that property is worth, and then we can move forward from that point, and if he decides to, to move forward, we can go forward. And that's a blighted part of the city, and it's really hard to get developers to look at those particular parcels, and we're not committing to anything, it's all at the expense of the developer, and we get an idea of what the price would be for that property, and then ask him for a number of, of developments, I mean, of, uh, architectural drawings and so forth. So I would move that, uh, we continue with the staff's recommendation.
I had a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
Okay, I would, I would object to her motion.
Excuse me, my other concern is that there was a donation that was made to Monica's Senate campaign, uh, before this vote today.
Okay, I would like to add that I wanna read your four sixties from you and Susan, and start talking about your, all the contributions that you received from every developer, if you're gonna make that the issue. So I deny, I, I said, I deny your request. You do take a lot of money from a lot of developers, and I'm gonna bring that up, that becomes issue. Susan Rubio and her sister are running for campaigns, and they just take a lot of... No, you're gonna do it, Susan, no. Not your, Susan, I'm speaking.
This has nothing to do with the item.
It does, because she brought it up.
I brought it up because I think so.
Excuse me, but I was talking, Mayor, can you help? I'm gonna finish. Both of you take a lot of contributions. Susan Rubio and her sister takes contributions from the city attorney, from a lot of contractors that are up here, and you guys wanna make that the issue, so where's, you know, you gotta buy us. You, you have a lot of, you took in money from Royal Coaches, or yet you, you take money from o, other contractors here, then you shake them down and bring them up here and, and ask for invoices. I think that's wrong. So Mayor, I don't know where we're at with this, but I'll object to her, whatever she wants to do.
Mayor, before we go ahead, because I'm, I know that I'm gonna lose on this one, I just wanna clarify that, again, Council, my Vice Mayor Pacheco is, is, um, is making up a lot of these stories. I am free to show my four sixty, and I don't, I, I'm, I have nothing to hide, like you do, Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Really?
So, yes, so I'm not going to...
Hold on, louder to speak, please.
I'm not going to take up any more time. I said what I needed to say, and that's fine.
All right, thank you. Okay, so at this point, there is a, a motion by Councilmember Cruz Baca, and it was seconded by Councilmember, uh, Susan Rubio, and there was one objection by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. So at this point, I will ask Ms. Abila to take roll call.
All right. Councilmember Baca?
No.
That is to move this to another day.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Who's, who knows? Yes. Councilmember Rubio?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pacheco?
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Mayor Lozano?
No. Okay, the motion fails, three, two.
Mayor, I would like to, uh, motion to move this forward. I think it's a great opportunity for us to develop this site. It's a, it's unsightly, it's, uh, it serves nobody at this point in time, and I think we can get a nice development, and I wanna thank, uh, Mayor Potem Ricardo Pacheco for making the statements that you did, because you're absolutely right. So my motion is to approve this.
All right, is, is there a second? Second, any objections?
Yes.
Okay, well, at this point, there's two objections, so I have our manning City Clerk. Abila, uh, take roll call, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Potem Pacheco, sorry?
The, yeah, the motion is to pass.
To move the item.
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
No.
Councilmember Rubio?
No.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes, motion passes, three, two. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go over to the public hearing, which is the update of the cost of the city's service fees based on Consumer Price Index, CT, and other adjustments. So who is handling this?
Uh, asking that that item be held over one more time until, uh, the sixteenth.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to place this on the, the sixteenth. It was seconded by Councilmember Monica Garcia. Any objections? See none, so move. Item ten, public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, Community Development Block Grant, CDVG and Home Invest in Partnership Fund Annual Action Plan. So at this point, we have the Honorable and the Distinguished Ms. Suzy Relas.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I know it's late, so let's get this done. Um, tonight's hearing is a final of two required public hearings to receive comments or input regarding the proposed CDVG and Home Fiscal Year two thousand eighteen, nineteen Annual Action Plan. We actually have great news this year. For the first time in several years, the allocations from home, from HUD have not reduced, but have actually increased. The CDVG increases a little bit less than eighty thousand, and the home increases over a hundred thousand. The unfortunate part is the, the announcement of funding didn't happen until today, therefore the proposed annual plan, under consideration tonight, includes the old allocations. However, in anticipation of the announcement, and to ensure the report is finalized and submitted by the HUD due date of May fifteenth, staff would include in tonight's staff report the recommendation to authorize the C, the CEO and Director of Community Development to revise project funding as needed based on the actual amounts, once they were, were announced. As soon as those revisions have been made, we'll submit the plan to HUD, and then staff will include in a future council communication report, and also post on the city's website the list of the final, um, individual allocations as revised. City Council is now requested to open the public hearing, accept public comments, and upon closing the hearing, um, approve the proposed plan, noting the pending revisions by the CEO and Director. I'm available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in, in favor of this one, the CDVG, you could come up and do so at this time. Anyone opposing? See no further interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. So at this point, do we need a motion for this particular, uh, public hearing, or just closing it?
A, a motion to approve.
All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and motion for the, uh, public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, Community Development Block Grant, CDVG and Home Invest in Partnership Home Fund Annual Action Plan. That is my motion.
Second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to item eleven, which is a consideration of towing franchise requests for proposal, RFP, or extension. Uh, so at this point, uh, anyone have any questions?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Uh, I would just like to add that, uh, I know that there's several comments made, and there's a lot of interest by different contractors for this particular contract. I know that, uh, a lot of the statements that were made here about exclusionary contracts and contracts for ten years and all that, a lot of the vendors that are, that will eventually bid for this type of a, of a contract, have the same contracts in other cities. They give contributions to every council member in their particular cities, they have a lot of cities that, uh, that they're in, and, you know, I just think, you know, it's, they're all the same. I mean, it's, it's equal as far as how they do the, I think that Royal Coaches is a very good company, very exemplary company. I think they've, uh, uh, they've done good service, they've worked very hard in, in West Covina, they, they do a good job there, and, and a lot of other cities that, um, you know, that they, that they work in. Uh, so I really enjoyed the fact that they've been serving the City of Ballin Park, uh, for so many years, and, uh, I think that, uh, you know, they try to help out in the community as much as they can. But for the sake of transparency, I would support doing, uh, a six-week RFP. Uh, if everybody feels that there's a community out there feels that there's an issue, let's[1638.54] feels that there's a community out there feels that there's an issue, let's take a look at, at everybody and give them a fair opportunity to, to bid on the contract. And I would say that the bidding would start immediately, a six-week, uh, opening bid, and bring them back to the next available council meeting, I guess in June.
I'll second that.
And the, the other, the other thing I would say is they would stay as the firm until after the bidding, and if they win the bid, then they continue. If they don't, then there'll be a transition period for that.
Yeah, let me, let me just real quick also mention, because I know that individuals were up here who unfortunately spoke very derogatory of this particular towing company that has been in Ballpark since the nineteen seventies, and they have a stellar record. It was mentioned about the court itself, just to let everyone know, no charges, that was dropped. And the unfortunate, and the thing that you need to know about this particular towing company is that they have literally pitched in hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars throughout the community, while including the veterans that are here in Ballpark as well. So it's unfortunate that, of course, certain people are marketing for a specific towing company, and they've now become the target, and that's just the way it is. That's part of the, the democratic process that we have, so accept it in that particular way. But I just have to make sure that I, that I, for the record, say this family is very, extremely family-oriented in our community, and it has been for, for many, many years. As a matter of fact, the, the good service that they provide for the city of West Covina, they're the only towing company in West Covina, they expand them for ten years. So that in itself says a lot of the type of work and commitment that the workers provide every day throughout, throughout, throughout the region as well. I just want to state that for the record. All right. So at this point, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco has, we make, did you make a motion to move this, right? Motion second, no objections. So it will be on, the RFP has been requested, no objections. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, because there's some information provided earlier by the speaker that I think is incorrect. According to the staff report, this contract's gonna expire on August twentieth, two thousand eighteen, not May, whatever he said.
Okay, all right. Okay, so at this point... Okay, Mayor, but I just want to make sure that it is the staff understanding that they will continue to be the city's tow operator until after the bidding, and if they win, they continue. If not, is there any other information you need about the tow contract so that there's a smooth transition from RFP to, to the award? Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Something was mentioned about, and I see it also, that according to the ordinance that we, that we approved a few weeks ago, that it's, who decides on their exemplary work ethics, or which is exemplary? Who decides that? Who says that they're exemplary? I'm just curious to know. Who...
Go ahead, legal counsel.
Councilmember Baca, the city council has to decide whether or not they're exemplary or not. It would have to be a vote by the city council, and three people would have to vote in the affirmative to make them exemplary.
Okay, so it's not something like the highway patrol, or the police department, or whoever regulates the, the towing, like a committee or something?
No, Councilmember Baca, in fact, for all intents and purposes, we've taken the police department out of the process.
Oh, okay.
Based on recommendations and so forth. So it would be the city council that's going to make that recommendation, not anybody else.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I, you know, I, I'm sure I'll get a hundred questions tomorrow, and that's probably going to be one of them, that who decides their exemplary status is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, I will move for German.
Well, Mayor, just for clarification, so we're voting on two, right? We went with the direct staff to do the RFP, just to be clear, because I want that to be what, you know, the lasting people here. I don't want to confuse the audience. We're voting on two to go to RFP. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, are we at the end of the meeting here?
Yes, we are, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to show a couple of slides here on some of the achievements that the city's had. If we could put those slides up. So we're continuing, you can see if you drive around the city, we have residential street rehabilitation. We've completed street rehabilitation work on ten residential streets, including resurfacing of Ramona Boulevard from Main Avenue to Bogart Street with rubberized asphalt. The rehab of three hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet of roadway using a total of four thousand four hundred tons of asphalt material. Rubberized mature used from the Recycle California Used Tires, which diverted approximately two thousand four hundred waste tires landfills. Construction of ten build-outs and thirty-three ADA complying curb ramps for the city's safe route to school master plan near the Tracy Elementary. These improvements make it safer for students to walk to and from school. Next slide. Arbor Day event. The event provided an interactive resource fair, activities, games, and Ralpho prizes. Twelve students from throughout the Ballpark Unified School District were recognized as art contest winners. Waste management provided over twenty-yard tons of, of mulch as a giveaway to the general public, serving over two hundred and fifty participants. And by the way, Manny Creel, I left my bag of mulch out there. Hopefully guys saved it. Okay. A tree dedication ceremony was conducted in honor of Mrs. Lilian Moore and Mr. Rudy Escalera, who both served Ballpark for many years of favorable contributions and volunteerism towards the community. So, thank you, Mayor, for that.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm...
That's fine.
Sorry, I was not able to attend the Arbor Day celebration. I was at a convention. But I, I think Sam should announce about, I'm sure it'll be on the website if it isn't already, I didn't look, about the tree giveaway.
Oh, that's right.
And so forth, which is very exciting.
Big time.
He, I did get the text or the email, and I did make a couple of suggestions for people that would like some of those trees. So could you please explain it to the residents about the, the tree? I don't know if there's any left, but for the trees.
Sure. Sure. So it's part of a tree planting grant that we received from the Hill of Lees's office. But we were present at Arbor Day. Public Works had a booth along with the San Gabriel Conservation Corps. We were there offering trees, free trees, to residents to plant and maintain, you know, in front of their property. We, we, we got a pretty good feedback. We got over thirty-five signups, and we're gonna be putting that up in the website. We have a lot of other locations where we're gonna be doing that. And the Corps was there actually recruiting for jobs for BP residents. So it was a good turnout. We passed out flyers, and the information will be on the website soon.
Oh, thank you. And, and I know that it's a, it's a wonderful celebration. Like I said, unfortunately, I wasn't able to. But thank you very much to staff, and I know, I saw, I think, a couple of days before, I saw our Public Works guys digging the holes or making the holes, whatever you call it, to get ready for the tree planting. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this point, I move for German. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any objections? Seeing none. Good evening. Viva Ballpark.
And Mayor, don't forget, May twelfth is the prayer march.
Oh, that's right. That's right. May twelfth. Thank you.
Starting from Pastor Jackson's church and walking to new beginnings.
Thank you.
I know we adjourned, but that's very important. And happy Mother's Day, everybody.
Hey, Mark.
It's Mother's Day. You got any plans for Mother's Day, your mom, your wife? I have a friend that sometimes when I ask her, she says, when I, when I have asked her in the past about her mother-in-law, because her mother had passed away a lot...